All right, I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 18th, Meeting of the San Jose County Board of Commissioners to order. If you would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is the opening reading of bids. I will note there are none. So we move on to the reports and requests. First is the accounts payable docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we get to start with one of the best things we do as commissioners at our meetings, and that's recognize some folks who certainly are deserving of recognition. So we will start with the business of the month. Commissioner Dieter.
Thank you, sir. The commissioners have decided unanimously that Long Shots Bar and Grill in downtown New Carlisle is the business of the month. Okay, we can applaud for that. Run by Robert and Eli Stevens, have been down there for about 10 years. They serve the community well. I have attended that place many times with my trips to New Carlisle. They've done a tremendous job during the pandemic by takeout service, drive up service, keeping business alive and down there. So they've done a fantastic job. So we really are very happy that they are in San Joe County and serving our residents well. So we will be bringing a plaque down to you probably within a week to 10 days, taking a photo, which will go on our county website. And also, drumroll, you will be on the Commissioners' Hall of Fame on the seventh floor with a photo. So again, we appreciate that. I don't know, Eli, are you on this? All right, anybody else want to speak for Long Shots?
Yeah, this is Dan Caruso from New Carlisle. I have to say that I'm not a big meat eater, but when I go to Long Shots, I was advised that you gotta have a burger there. And I have to tell you, that is an amazing burger. You get into Long Shots, lots of good food and lots of good company, but the burgers are amazing. And Roger and Eli and Roger's wife Ruthie, who isn't on scene very often, but Roger and Eli are very good hosts, and you owe it to yourself to stop in there. Thank you.
So you're no longer a vegan?
Um, I don't eat a lot of meat, a lot of red meat. But yeah, I haven't been a vegan pretty much ever. I've always had some kind of meat in my diet. Just my doctor told me to limit it, so I limited.
That's good. That's good. Thank you, Dan. That's cool. Appreciate it, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Long Shots? All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Some thank you. Next, we move on to the citizen of the month, and I'm very proud to announce that Mark Johnson, the longtime basketball coach, most recently at San Joe High School, is here. Just to say a couple of words about Mark, he has got 470 career wins, and that's a lifetime. And more so than just winning basketball games, is he's teaching just multiple generations of how to be good young men and how to be productive citizens. But the two favorite stories about Mark for me are, so I had, it was Mark's first year at San Joe, and it was my son's, he was coaching freshman boys' basketball at the time, and I had the pleasure of helping out. So it was Mark's first year not coaching in a long time, so we asked him to come to tryouts, and he gave a very detailed breakdown of strengths, weaknesses of every player that tried out, and that was it. I mean, Mark knew more about, forgot more about basketball than my son and I ever knew, but Mark, you know, just that's the kind of gentle spirit he is. He just gave his feedback and then, and then, you know, went about his business. And that, but I think the thing that sums up Mark the best for me is, so after an amazing run this year for San Joe High School, and my nephew Will, Terry, was one of the folks on there, and we coached some of the kids as freshmen who were seniors on that team this year. But after one of the greatest wins that I've ever seen in my life when they beat Hammond, and after that game, the first thing Mark did was go see his wife and his grandkids, because that was the most important thing to him. After just one of the greatest victories he, I think he ever had, the most important thing was to share it with his family. So I think that sums up to me the kind of man that Mark Johnson is. So thank you so much.
Well, number one, I'm very humbled, and I'm very appreciative of this tremendous award that was given to me. And Andy, you said that exactly how I wrote it out for you. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, your handwriting is kind of tough to read, so next time type it out for me, if you could.
But it's been a tremendous experience, especially doing the city that I love so much, South Bend, Indiana. And it's just, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm greatly humbled, and I'm very appreciative for this award. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Whoa, 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 excuse me, I've got something to say. I've known Coach for a long, 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 long time.
We're getting older, my friend.
Okay, but at the end of the day, like Andy alluded to, just the basketball thing, but I know you more on a personal basis, and kids that I have coached back in the day that ended up playing for you, and some kids were in a spot that you helped them tremendously that you don't see in the box scores and you don't see in that, and the general public has no clue of what you have to deal with at some point. But again, all the things that you've done, which is dear to me from where those kids came from and what you did for their self-esteem, what you did for their families, what you did to make them a better person, not just a basketball player, but to succeed in life, is phenomenal. So again, I appreciate everything you've done. And anyone who still craves an Alabama shirt, now will get one. So I appreciate what you've done, buddy.
Much respect. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you want, Mark, in a second, why don't you come up here, we'll take a picture. And I promise, once we get the plaque in, I'll stop by the San Joe cafeteria and find you at your favorite table there.
Sounds good.
Why don't you come on up, and we'll get a picture. All right, now we move on to our youth of the month. And I can't think of a more fitting individual that kind of just shows all that we would ask for our youth, and that's Max Zeus. He's a senior at Clay High School, and he's been a great leader throughout his high school career athletically, as well as serving the student body. He was student council class officer for four years and is senior class president. He is in the National Honor Society and will graduate with an academic honors diploma. He will have earned a total of 21 letters in seven sports. That is unheard of in this generation of multiple, single sport players and everything else. But that just shows Max's commitment to Clay High School. He's shown outstanding sportsmanship and citizen during his time at Clay. But kids like Max don't just happen by accident. So I think Janay and Al, his parents are on the call as well, we'll give them a chance to say something in a second. But it's because of people like Janay and Al and the way they raised Max, that shows how important Clay High School is to all three of them, but especially Janay. I remember working with Janay back when I was in Clay High School, working with some of the senior mentor groups, and she has dedicated her life to Clay High School and making your community a better place. So if any, Janay or Al, or if you guys like to have anything to say, we'd love to, we'd love to hear it.
Andy, we are just so proud of Max. As you know, you know, we have put four boys through Clay High School. So first of all, I'd like to say that we are definitely proud to be members of the Clay community and get our fourth child through Clay High School very successfully. And we are so proud of Max and all that he has done and all that Clay has done for him. And we're so honored that you guys have given him this award this month.
Yeah, and I would like to add that, I guess, having an AD as a stepdad, complaining about not having a kicker for the football team, and then joining the football team during his other two sports that he was involved in. We have tons of athletes that may get, you know, nine varsity letters in a high school career, and that's, we get, it's pretty special to get a blanket when you get to nine or 10. I've never seen a kid get anywhere near 21 varsity letters. So he's really worked hard for this. Yeah.
I did check the HSA website, and 21 is a car. So I assume, you and Janay can make that magic happen. That'll be great. Max, I see you on the call. Anything you'd like to say?
I would just like to say thank you, guys, for this honor. And it's been very nice to represent Clay in the way I have the last four years.
Awesome. Well, thank you for everything you do. We, as I mentioned with some of the other winners, once we get the plaque and hopefully a week or so, we'll stop down to Clay High School and we'll give it to you formally. So thank you so much for everything you do, and I can't wait to see all the great things you're going to do in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we're moving on to second amendment to local government service exchange agreement, WNIT Public Access. This is an agreement that we have with WNIT and the county, that they, they kind of help broadcast some of our meetings, both at the, especially at the council level. This is a good partnership to assist them in their programming as well. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this agreement.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, resolution R17C2021, Community Development Block Grant in Partnership with Logan Community Resources, Inc. Ms. Corey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to take this time to propose-
Please state your name and speak into the microphone as well. But aside from that, you're fine.
Corey Zipka, Otters Office, second floor, county city building. Is that better?
Magic.
All right. I would like to take this time to present a grant opportunity with San Joseph County and the Logan Center with resolution R17C2021. This is an opportunity from the Community Connections for People with Disabilities, CCPWD. It's offered through Indiana Division of Disability and Rehabilitative Services, DDRS, in partnership with Okra, Office of Community and Rural Affairs. This grant is a supplement from the CDBG Coronavirus, so many letters, CBD, CB, funds authorized under the CARES Act. For round two, the grant opportunity encourages Indiana communities to address COVID-19-related barriers to community inclusion experienced by Hoosier adults with disabilities, and to leverage virtual technology-assisted strategies where necessary and beneficial. Round two is a grant opportunity restricted to applicants proposing activities targeted at Hoosiers with disabilities 18 and over, and only proposed activities can feasibly be completed within six to nine months. For this grant opportunity, the grant request is $200,000. Logan Center will receive the majority of that with $15,000 for the city, for the county of San Joseph, for administrative services. For round one, the Logan Center has, was already started some of their projects with the city of South Bend. For the grant opportunity, the same grantee cannot be approved for several rounds in a row. So that's why they're looking to the county for pass-through on this grant. It's not forecasted to renew at this time, and there's no match and no income contribution required. And Kristin is here to, from Logan Center. She's the Grants and Foundations Manager. She's going to tell you a little bit more about their project that they're wanting to do within the county, and a little bit about the budget. And their IT Director, Thomas, is also on the line for additional questions to follow up.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I can't, I know how to use a microphone. My name's Kristin. That's K-R-I-S-T-I-N, Schwerha, S-C-H-W-E-R-H-A. I am the Grants and Foundations Manager at Logan Community Services Resources, Inc. And as Corey explained to you, this is a grant from the state of Indiana, from Beads and Okra and the CCPWD. We have a lot of acronyms with the state of Indiana. So what they are asking us to do, and this is round two, first off, I should explain, we did get a grant of $69,000 in round one. It was with the city of South Bend. The Okra allows us to give 8% administrative fees. So that's exactly what we have put in their budget and in yours, is the 8%. So for $200,000, the county would get $15,000 to administer the grant. There is no, there is no cost. As she explained, there is no match. What they are trying to do is, through an initiative by Governor Holcomb, is to have people with disabilities, and as you probably well know, Logan works with intellectual and developmental disabilities and people on the autism spectrum disorder, or with an autism spectrum disorder. What they're trying to do is help to eliminate social isolation and the depression, the despair, the feeling of loneliness that comes with that. People who have an ADD are typically medically fragile, so we're very, very careful about what they're doing and how they're doing things. Just to let you know, Logan is, has never completely shut down except for a couple of weeks as we revamped things. Our autism centers are at about a 90% capacity now. Our day services is approximately 50%. And the reason for that is that we are zoning, and we are very careful on keeping people safe. So if somebody has COVID, everybody has to be tested, things of this nature. So with only 50% back, we have a lot of things that we're doing through technology. This grant would, has the component that was required, which is to have technology that would go out to the clients. In the one with the city, we only worked with Logan clients. In this one, we've expanded it. So we're asking for iPads to go to Logan clients, yes, that are outside the city of South Bend. So anywhere else in the county, could be Osceola, Mishawaka, New Carlisle, North Liberty, anything of that nature, Granger. And they would then have a lending library, have the opportunity to, excuse me, check out an iPad with full support. These would be owned by Logan, and they would be loaned out to them. In addition to the ones that we would do for our own clients, though, we are asking for 22 iPads to be loaned out to non-Logan clients. Many times, people in the smaller communities, particularly people with disabilities, may be living at home, may not have services with an outside organization. And in fact, we've had some phone calls from people saying, how could they, North Liberty in particular called and wanted to know how they could take advantage of this grant. So we wrote into this, the 22 iPads. They would be configured and set up by our IT department. Safeguards would be put on them. There are certain programs they would not be able to access, and they would be loaned out to the community for them to loan to some of their constituents or people that live there. In addition, we're also asking for a couple of MiFi's, which is like a Wi-Fi, only it's just a personal unit, because sometimes you could have a computer, but if you don't have internet access, it doesn't help you at all. We're also asking in this grant for smart boards for the Logan facilities. Smart boards are interactive boards so that when our clients are there, and by the way, we have 1,500 clients at Logan in a variety of capacities. So when the clients are there, they can actually interact with what's going on on the internet. They can go up, touch the board, they can travel, they can do things. We have some smart boards in our facility, excuse me, in Benton Harbor with our autism center, and they just love them. The curriculum coordinators at Logan are very excited about the possibility of having this. The third thing is our newest program, and it is another part of the grant, is that they wanted to see how people could get back into community employment, which is a big focus for Logan as other organizations dealing with ADD and ASD. This is a very exciting program. It's brand new. It's an initiative that we would be taking on with the South Bend Airport, and we would be doing community employment at the airport. We would have classes there for our clients in community employment, and we are a certified provider with the Indiana Vocational Rehab Department. And they would be learning lots of different things, including, once a week, they would have a meeting by somebody from the departments of the airport to come and talk to them about what they could do at the airport, the kind of positions that they could have, the training that's necessary. Tim O'Donnell is also spoken with us and would like to give us first right on some of the jobs that come, because we are a voc rehab provider. So it's not that they're guaranteed, it's just that we get the first notice on them so that we, our clients can apply. In addition to those things, we would also have work experiences and internships for clients out at the airport. The airport has made a, they're actually the ones that approached us about six months ago. This grant just happens to fall in our lap at the same time, so it's a perfect match. They would like to have people who are coming into the county and into the airport see that we are an inclusive society and that we're proud of all of our citizens. Included in the grant is also a 75% of one person's salary in IT and 50% of one person's salary, no benefits or taxes. Logan would take care of that for somebody to do the community employment education or training.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Do you have any questions? I know it's a lot of information.
Any question from the board? Is there a motion?
Before I do that, I do ask that if anybody has anything to say or just wants to comment, that you use the sign-in sheet. That's a requirement for the grant, that I have a sign-in sheet available for people at our public hearing to sign in. And we have also asking if we could have a screenshot of the people who are on the Zoom. Again, it's part of the grant. It's not, not to appease me, it's to appease the state.
Certainly, certainly.
And as directed, all of this would be done within the next six to nine months. We have already ordered the materials for the city of South Bend. And Thomas, who is on the Zoom, if you have any technical questions, Thomas is our IT Director, and he can answer any of those questions. But I did check with him before this meeting, and they have been ordered. So as soon as they come in, they'll be placed in situations within the city. This would be for things outside of the city, elsewhere in the county, in particular the smaller communities that don't have the capability to write a grant like this.
Awesome. Any questions? Or is there anyone, a member of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Right, is there a motion from the board?
There is. A motion to approve this resolution R-17-C-2021, which is the Community Connections for the Disabilities Grant.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you very much.
Also, thank you, Corey. This is another great example of, from a county government standpoint, anything we can do to partner with local not-for-profits to help make their work more impactful. It's something that we always look to do. So thank everyone. All right, now we have an add-on for your meeting pleasure. Resolution R18C2021, Electronic Participation in Meetings Policy. So there's been all kinds of things happening as it relates to COVID. The governor's executive order, we believe, has expired. So there's new legislation that was passed that kind of governs how electronic meetings can continue. So we have this, I had to just read it out because it's fairly short. Where is effective April 22nd, it was, the state code was amended to allow a governing body of a public agency of a political subdivision to participate in a meeting by an electronic means of communication, whereas in order to allow participation by members in a meeting by electronic means, a governing body must adopt a written policy. Thus, our resolution establishing the procedures that apply. San Joseph County Board of Commissioners has determined that it is in the best interest of San Joseph County and its members that we adopt such a written policy. Section 1, the Board of County Commissioners hereby adopts and approves the attached electronic participation in meetings policy. All Board of Commissioners meetings are subject to this policy regarding electronic participation in the meetings. This resolution shall be in full force. So it lists, and we'll post this on the website, it lists there certain things. A, if a meeting is going to be held electronically, a majority of the members must be in, must be present. It also allows for electronic participation or remote participation, but that's limited to a certain number of times. So someone could not just perpetually be calling in or zooming in for the meeting. So we can kind of disseminate all of this to folks, but we wanted to at least set this policy in place. And this only is for the Board of Commissioners. It doesn't impact any other public entity. Those public entities would need to pass a similar resolution or ordinance or notification. So once again, we made great technology upgrades here at the county. So we want to continue, though, to make our appointments, our meetings available to the public. So they'll be able to zoom in. We're going to encourage public participation as best we can, whether that be in person or for the public to continue to be accessing remotely. So we'll make that available moving forward as well. Any questions or comments?
I think it's a great idea. As you can tell, we get more people on Zoom than we would in person. So it's just another great way to get our message out to the public.
And get their messages to us, too.
Here, here.
If there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this resolution number R-18-C-2021, which is electronic participation at our meetings.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion, next up, bill's passed by the San Joseph County Council at a public hearing held on Tuesday, May 11, 2021. They passed, and we're going to hear these as a slate if anyone has any question or comments about any of these items. But it was Bill 4821, Ordinance 3821, amending salaries in the Board of Commissioners office for our HR Department. Bill 4721, Ordinance 3921, salaries for probate court. And then we have a series of items for the prosecutor, amending salaries. Bill 5021, Ordinance 4021. Bill 5121, Ordinance 4121. Bill 2221, Ordinance 4221. Bill 3621, Ordinance 4321. All those are for the prosecutor. We have Bill 4621 is for the transfer and appropriation, which was Ordinance 4421. Then we have Bill 4121, Ordinance 4521, amending the code book for street parking for area plan. And finally, Bill 4421, Ordinance 4821 was the creation of a fund to receive the American Rescue Plan Act monies when they come in. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
Oh, yes. A motion to approve all these ordinances.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to the Health Department. Request approval to apply for a CDC grant.
Good morning. This is, yes, this is Amy Rupee, Administrator for the Department of Health, with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. Before you, we are requesting support for a funding opportunity through the CDC to onboard additional community health workers and deploy them to San Joseph County through different agencies to build and strengthen community resilience to fight COVID through addressing health disparities.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve to apply for this Center for Disease Control grant.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Next, Infrastructure Planning and Growth. First item is the Consent Agenda. I will note, there is an irrevocable letter of credit for Clover Hills. And then there is the Eighth Annual American Legion Stars and Stripes Forever Ride on June 19th. American Legion Fallen Heroes Family Ride on- Heroes Family Ride on June 27th, Ninth Annual Get Wet for a Vet Ride, August 7th, and Beacon Health System Sunburst Races on September 25th. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval of supplement easement and right-of-way agreement with I N M. Mr. Sky.
Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the seventh and eleventh floor of this building. This item includes an agreement for supplemental easement that I Indiana with Indiana Michigan Power on property owned by the Board of Commissioners. This property is located along Smilex, north of Edison, and goes north to the railroad. And I N M is doing some electrical transmission work in this area and required a supplemental to the easement. The St. Joseph County Attorney and and Public Works Division has reviewed the document and requests the Board of Commissioners's approval.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this supplement easement and right-of-way agreement with I N M.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sky. Next, we request approval of a professional services proposal for from appraisal services, Inc. I think we can hear both these at the same time. We'll take separate votes and also request approval of professional services proposal from Iverson Grove Real Estate. Mr. Bill.
Good morning, Bill Shalio, Economic Development, part of Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the 11th and 7th floor. Before you today are two proposal, professional service proposals for appraisals out in the Indiana Enterprise Center, New Carlisle Economic Development area. Both appraisals request are asking to appraise the the same pieces of property. There's three properties associated with the future railroad corridor, parcel one, parcel two, and parcel four. Those are three properties located between Edison Road and the Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks. And then there's an additional piece of property on Larison Boulevard that's located at five one six five zero. We've previously appraised that piece of property, but it's been a couple of years. So we need to get updated appraisals. The proposal from appraisal services would be $1,500 for parcels one, two, and four, and $400 for the Larison Boulevard property. The proposal from Iverson Grove would be $1,500 per parcel and $500 for the Larison Boulevard proposal. The Redevelopment Commission has approved both of these proposals at its last meeting last week, and staff would be happy to answer any questions, but we would request your approval, please.
Are there, in fact, any questions or comments for that matter? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve both these appraisal requests.
Second.
So I think let's do each of them individually. So let's start my fault. Yeah, let's start with.
Sorry.
Yeah, we had we had a joint hearing. But so let's start with the for appraisal services, Inc. Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve the appraisal services, Inc.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, for Iverson Grove Real Estate, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this Iverson Grove Real Estate appraisal opportunity.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have a request approval of a consultant for the St. Joseph County Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Abby.
Good morning. Abby Wiles, Area Plan Commission, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the 7th and 11th floor. It's always a mouthful. All right. I am here today requesting a more or less affirmation of the selection committee's recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for the consultant on the comprehensive plan and then the authorization to allow staff to negotiate the contract with the selected consultant. So back in February, the Board of Commissioners approved the release of the request for proposals for a consultant to assist us in the development of a new comprehensive plan. Proposals were received March 16th, and a total of 12 were received. A selection committee was formed to read, score, review the proposals, and interview the finalists. Commissioner Costelli participated for the Board of Commissioners, Councilwoman Hess for County Council, Adam Devon, who's our A P C President, Brian Palowski, who's the Redevelopment Commission President, and Sky, our county engineer. And then I participated as staff facilitating the process. So from the proposals received, a total of three firms were interviewed. The selection committee met and is recommending Rundle Ernst Berger Associates, R E A out of Indianapolis. They are partnered with Abin Marsh Consultants, who is a local firm that will assist with a lot of the infrastructure analysis. I have worked with R E A previously and can't say enough good things about them. I have the utmost confidence that they'll that they're up to the task of assisting us with this process.
So basically, we've kind of landed on a preferred vendor for this. So what we're doing is authorizing Abby and her team to kind of continue conversations related to finalizing that agreement. And then, once that is done, that'll come back to the Board of Commissioners, then we will take final action for that.
Correct. Not requesting approval of the contract today, but authorization to negotiate the contract.
This is more of a belt and suspender kind of thing, but we thought, as as everything we've done with the comprehensive plan, we're going to do so as out in the open as publicly as we possibly can. So any questions or comments for Ms. Abby? Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve this and negotiate contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Just want to take a second to thank Abby for the great work she has done in managing this process, and more importantly, for the great work she is going to do in both finalizing this contract and all the fun that will ensue for the next 18 to 24 months.
Great. Thank you.
Excited to get this updated, too. I'm so glad that we're doing this. Thank you so much.
All right, old business. Seeing none. Moving to public comments. Are there any public comments? Any of our folks joining us? Dan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Costelli, Dan Caruso, three zero five, Compton Street, New Carlisle. I just wanted, actually, I'm not going to be critical today. I knew you find that surprising. I do want to say that I have noticed in my several year involvement with the O S A group that there does seem to be a lot more openness now in things coming out. And I noticed that when I was on the Area Plan Commission, that Abby was kind of pushing for that, for everything to be out in the open. And I'm sure the commissioners behind the scenes are are doing their part. And I do want to say that the rail spur, I was just looking at maps of the rail spur, I find that.
You there, Dan? Kind of cut out. Well.
Rail spurs are the way to go. It limits the truck traffic, the damage to the roads and bridges. And it's just a cleaner way to move things. And it buys into, let's get the rail upgraded and use rail more than than other fossil fuel sources for transportation. But I do appreciate things starting to come into the open. Thank you, and everybody, please be safe.
Thank you, Dan.
I've got a comment, though, if nobody else is.
You go right ahead.
I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure so far working with our commissioners. We've done a lot of proactive things from all these, the business citizens and youth of the month. In two weeks from today, the commissioners, thank you, are providing all county employees self-defense classes. So we're, we have 30 in the first class, which will be next, the next two, starting in two weeks, on Tuesdays at the O'Brien Center. We also have a co-ed softball team if anybody wants to play. So and other safety features that we will be introducing to the building in the next couple of months. So again, it's been a lot of fun working with those commissioners and do a lot of proactive, proactive things for the community. So thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Dieter. Mr. Fleming, anything you'd like to say?
Oh, yes, yes. I just want everybody to know that my friend Ethan Hunt, who is the owner and the starting development of the International Soccer Academy of America, which is the I S A A, and it's in Mishawaka. And what he texted me about was that today, the Villarreal, which is a Spanish soccer team from Spain, will announce partnership with them, with the I S S A A, and sparking one of the biggest U S European soccer partnerships to date. So far, now, this, this is the school, which is in Mishawaka, which is where the old Y M C A used to be there. Okay. And he's moving it up. They have 20 students so far, and they want to have anywhere between 50 and 75 students. But so wow, that any of these kids then now can be sent to Spain to play soccer. So I'm very excited that things are that he's doing that and things getting updated. So I just wanted to update everybody about this, about the International Soccer Academy of America and what Ethan Hunt had texted me about. So yeah, I want everybody to know that.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Any other public comments? Seeing none. A motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Your motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Tough luck. We are recessed.